Everyone has it signed in. Please sign in when you can. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Land Planning Board to order on June 11th, 2015 at 7:31 in the evening. MLDA Live, we'll start with the roll cup.
Bob Kuhn.
Mark Eng.
Jamie Lowery.
Jonathan Henry.
Rich Canong.
Roger Moore.
Ted Reddick, where?
Right here, right here.
We have, uh...
He should be here.
He's at the sidewalk.
We have a couple of items on the agenda.
We have approval of minutes from April 9th and May 7th. And then we have two items. We have, the first item is a hearing. Du Bois Livestock Incorporated requests to present evidence of planning board bias in the matter of a conditional use permit renewal for Du Bois Livestock Incorporated composting operation. The record showed that Tom Edin is not here. And the second one is a pending application. Du Bois Livestock Incorporated agricultural composting operations, conditional use permit renewal, determination of completeness. And then we have a planers report.
So, any motion? Can we approve the agenda?
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor? It was closed. It wasn't unanimous. But I want the agenda, the approval of minutes for April 9th.
And just to refresh my memory, what was the correction that was made? There was one correction?
Not on April 9th.
There was a correction that was made, stop.
Oh, I'm sorry.
May 9th was sent out on email, right? Everything?
Yes.
Yeah. Right here.
May 9th? May 7th. We have April 9th.
April 9th. April 9th.
Is there a section?
Sorry.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of April 9th. Is there discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is unanimous. Monday 7th.
Yeah.
I don't think they're allowed to say.
Motion has been made to accept. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. On to the next item of business. Du Bois Livestock requests to present evidence of planning board bias. So on to the floor, yours.
Before we start, Mr. Chairman, I would like to recuse myself as a better Du Bois.
Uh, well, you have a couple of issues we have to deal with. First off, I don't know if you gentlemen realize, but the Maine Senate passed a amendment to the White Farm Act, okay, which creates, you know, treats composting as the agricultural product and puts Du Bois Livestock directly into the, uh, the, uh, the number of the, uh, of the act. So, we believe at this point, I'm going to give you guys a piece of the documents that I put together so you can look at it for a second. Because I think it's important that you understand that by this point, we think we're required to withdraw our, uh, our application because there has to be a decision made whether or not we are in fact part of the...
At this point, Mr. Federer, the question is whether or not you have evidence of planning board bias.
Oh, I do have evidence. Yes, and that's what I do. This is supposed to be a, a hearing, okay, to determine bias, okay, or just to present evidence. I've got evidence, which I will give to you now. I want you guys to go through this. I was set up, they said I had to present a foundation before I, uh, before I could ask questions. I get a foundation. Okay, we go through this piece at a time. How would you like to do it?
I would like you to present it.
Okay, start with page one. Let me get my hands, my glasses here.
Do you want a copy?
I don't want it.
You have an extra one for yourself?
I don't know.
It's not for the public.
It's not for the public?
You want one?
Yeah, B's up.
Well, no, in a sense...
I'm, I'm the public right now, so that's not...
Well, I've got, I've got...
You don't need it right now.
I, I think maybe the planning board, yeah, you might want to give it to you. We're going to kind of leave you off.
If you don't have enough, then...
I'm sorry, I just, just go on again. Yeah, I don't want to say anything, okay? Yeah. Should we sit down and stand up for...
That's entirely up to you, Mr. Federer.
Okay, let me sit down because it makes it easier to go through this. Makes it easier to bear. Okay, the first thing on the, on the, uh, on the table of contents is the contention of bias that's about the planning board. Okay, we set out the contention, okay? You guys have to read it. I think you four, you guys read it as well. Where the contention is?
If I am reading this correctly, you say we are biased, and that's, that's it. There's no, there's nothing in here to indicate how that bias is presented. On this first page.
Oh, no, yeah, but it's...
Now, I just want to make sure I'm understanding on the first page.
Yeah, no, the first page, no, it, it, it's a, it's an issue of contention.
Okay.
What we can take, okay? Do you want to read it or not?
I read it.
Did you, all the general read it? Okay. Here we go to the second issue, which is the corruption of the planning board impartiality by the legality delegation of non-delictive duties to town planner Ted Reddick.
I'm, I have to stop you at this point. You are talking about the planning board being biased.
Yes.
And then you say that the planning board is corrupt. Those are not the same issue.
Please, please don't pick apart the, the wording, okay? This is not, this is not word smitting, okay? The problem is, okay, you have a, you have a town plan, okay, who has infiltrated this board to the point where he controls almost every aspect of a permit application.
Mr. Federer, this, this hearing is not about the town planner.
It is about the town planner. It's about the planning board because it is connected to the town planner.
In order for you to have a hearing on, about the town planner, you need to go to the board of selectmen and present evidence to them.
Okay, I'm not after the town planner. I'm after the planning board who has been influenced by the town planner. Your whole system is that a document comes into the clerk, okay? There is no system for, for documenting what comes in. At that point, it gets given to the town planner. At that point, you have no idea that a permit is made to this, to this board. You have no idea. Okay, weeks later, okay, if he chooses to do so, he says, oh, no, the plan was submitted. Our plan was submitted to the clerk on December 9th. You were told about it on January 15th. And as this particular document explains, okay, you went through this whole, you know, entourage of, of comment, okay, about Du Bois Livestock at a hearing when we weren't even there. We weren't invited. We weren't even told what was going to happen.
We did not have a hearing about the...
What did you call it then? Did you discuss issues of it? Did you discuss issues? Did you not, ha, 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 when the, uh, when the town planner said that our, uh, our, uh, application was not complete? Did you do that? Did you do that?
I remember chuckling, but I do not remember the circumstances under which it occurred. I would have to go back and review the...
You will have to review it because that's a part of the bias.
My chuckle is a part of the bias.
Absolutely. You're chuckling in your attitude about it, okay? The whole, the whole aspect of bias, okay, is the fact that you have been influenced by an outside, okay, information or, or person, okay? That creates bias. It doesn't matter if you're haters or lovers or anything else. The fact that you have acquired that information, okay, creates bias.
Can I ask a question? Has there ever been any indication of, of bias while you're at a meeting between you and us? Have we ever presented any type of bias to you directly?
To, to me directly?
To your, your applicant.
Well, that's...
You and...
Have you said anything that was derogatory to us? I don't, I don't know. We have been to all the meetings, you talked about us.
I'm not sure what the bias there. I feel I've never been biased.
Okay, then you need to read through this particular, uh, document so you have an idea of what it's talking about.
If you don't mind.
When was that date?
Hang, hang, hang on a minute.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather stay, I'd rather stay focused on the topic rather than, than attack individuals.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not trying to attack individuals. I'm talking about a...
It's all spent so far.
When was that date? That's what I asked.
February 15th.
Okay.
I wasn't even there. Okay, but the other ones were, okay?
Just go far.
Now, understand something. You guys have got this distorted idea of bias, okay? Okay, when, when, uh, if you want to know of the form of bias that I'm talking about, okay, it's, it's clear in relation to our application. We presented an application on December 9th.
Well, back to my question. Have you ever not gotten a fair shape from a friend?
Absolutely. Never gotten a fair shape from a friend. From, from, for a long time here, my friend. Okay, do, do, do not start with, with what we think, okay? Don't, now, another two. This is subjective stuff. You can say you know you didn't do it. I can say you did. That's not what we're here for. We're here to determine whether or not there's been a creation of bias, okay, by the conduct of the procedures, okay, or, or the, or whatever's happened between the town planner and you, whether or not your procedures create bias and create a, a system where you can't be fair. The fact that you didn't even know about our, our permit until January 15th, do you think that was fair? That created a fairness for us when we filed our application?
It makes you think we didn't know about the permit.
Because in January 15th, he brought it up and told you that it was. Did you know about the permit?
We all knew because there was a deadline to renew. We knew that. We don't, we don't approach you with...
Did you know that we filed on December 9th a permit? I'm going to tell you, you'll say no. You have to because you didn't know. Until January, if you, and another two, if you did know...
I can't exactly, because I don't know.
Okay, okay, if you, and another two. If you did know, why didn't you do something about the permit? It's that till December, December 9th.
I, I need to make a clarification of a point here. If you submitted the application on December 9th, there were no additional meetings until the, after the first of the year. We did not meet during the Christmas or New Year's holiday, so we would not have had time to hear about it before then.
Okay. You heard about it and you did nothing about it for four months.
We heard about it.
And not that it's disgusting.
We, we heard about it. We have, we have informed as a board, we have had a standing policy for many years that if the permit is incomplete, that it is not supposed to come before the board. We have left the determination of completeness after the town planner.
Four submissions.
There are certain, four submissions. There are certain items that need to accom, need to accompany a permit. In this particular case, one of them was that, what, the application states that there were to be nine or 10 copies of the permit submitted. Part of the conditional use permit is that the codes enforcement officer is to submit a report to, along with that application. We asked the town planner, was all of that stuff here? We were told no, therefore it's incomplete and it does not come before...
No, you did not ask it, okay? Now, it's amazing how you guys can create from, from thin air, okay, these issues that were never there. First off, okay, show me where, okay, you have permitted the town planner to take over a function of the planning board.
We would have to go back through and find in the minutes where we designated the town planner to indicate...
Again, you did not hear this.
And we're not here for that.
What are you here for, gentlemen?
We're here to...
We're here to...
Okay, this, this argument determines bias, okay?
To determine bias.
Okay.
The evidence that you're going to present to the board that shows bias on the part of the board.
Okay, now...
The procedure...
Did the, uh, did the town, I want you to go to section, uh... Uh, it's, it's the fifth one called emails where town manager orchestrating assembly under guise of executive session. A second?
Section 31.
It's, it's, it's fine. It's, it's, that's what the section is. It's really fine. I have to go back through. They have a lot of time to put this all together, and I've had it all numbered for you.
Okay. April 2nd, 2015. Am I looking at the right one?
I believe you are.
Emails town manager orchestrating assembly under the guise of executive session.
Yes. Now, those emails that I presented, they indicate that you gentlemen had nothing to do with putting together your executive session. Is that correct? No, no, read it, please. I'm not, I'm not asking you a question. I'm asking you to read what that says. That says that the town manager put together this so-called executive session.
There is a March 19th, Army Rich, um, asking, uh, as chair of the planning board, um, stating that he'd like to go to the town attorney for an executive session.
No, if you keep reading through it, you'll find that the town manager, as if you go through, orchestrated the entire, entire meeting. What purpose, what did you do in the, to orchestrate the...
Absolutely nothing.
Thank you. You? I think, did anybody really orchestrate the executive session for the planning board?
The only email I see in here...
Can I suggest something? I'd prefer that the town planner say nothing in this meeting.
Well, he, he asked me a valid question.
I don't give an answer without a question, not if it's not appropriate, okay? If it's not appropriate.
Then that's, you're, you have the right to object, but it is appropriate for the town planner to ask me a question.
On, based on what, what, what issue here, does he have a right to ask you a question?
He's here to advise the planning board. And when he asked me, when he makes the comment that he does not see any of my emails in here, that's a valid observation. And I believe he's correct. The only email I see in here was that I would not be available on any night other than Thursday.
Okay, the question, the question I posed was, the town manager orchestrated that executive session that was heard on, or held on April 2nd. And the proof is sitting right in front of you now. Is it there or is it not? We didn't get this by running around town and asking people. We got it from the town, okay? And it says that he did that. Is that not correct?
It says, are you, it asks a question of the attorney. Are you able to meet with the selectman of the planning board in executive session on Monday night, March 30th? If that, if, that does not make me think that he orchestrated this.
Then who orchestrated it, may I ask?
I don't know.
So you don't, who put together your executive session?
I know that there was an executive session between the planning board, the board of selectmen, and the town attorney.
Okay. Now, and you know how it got put together?
I got an email asking me if I would be able to attend an executive session, and I responded that I could not attend an executive session on, I could not attend any meeting on any night other than Thursday.
Okay. I'm Mr. Canong. You eventually went to a executive session?
That's correct.
How did you get notified that there was going to be an executive session?
I don't remember. I honestly do not remember.
Do any of you gentlemen remember?
I remember, I remember.
Yeah. I think it was advertised someplace.
From...
I think it was advertised. Okay.
I grabbed something from the town manager asking where we could arrange it to schedule. That's, that's first I got. Okay, with the selectmen and...
And the planning board.
The planning board and everybody else for the executive session.
Correct.
Now, let's go to the section which is just after this, on the purpose, okay?
Where are we at?
This, this next section will, you know, where you're at.
Is there a...
So, let me ask you this. Can, can, is it a fair statement? Is it a fair statement to indicate that none of you gentlemen had anything to do with putting together your executive session? Other than being told when it was and showing up?
Well, that's, that's not our job to arrange it, the, an executive session, but we were quite aware that it could, to be unscheduled.
Okay, and, but you didn't have anything to schedule?
Only to tell the town manager, only could attend.
Do you have anything to do with content of, what was going to be discussed?
Whether, whether we did or not, I think it would be inappropriate for any of us to comment on the content of what was discussed in that executive session. Whether we had anything to do with it or not. I do not believe it is appropriate, so that question is out of order.
Okay, the question I'm asking isn't what the contest was, but did you have anything to do with determining the content of...
I think that question is out of order.
That is not out of order? That is a purpose.
I will leave that determination up to our town attorney. I do not believe that's an appropriate question.
I can ask them about not, I don't want to determine the content at this point of the executive session. I want to determine whether we had anything to do with formulating the content of the...
I think that's a fair question. If you don't talk about...
Okay. Oh, no, I'm not asking...
Okay, I didn't.
You, did you have anything to do with it? Content?
I have nothing to do with it.
Can I make a point?
Yes, please.
Just because I, I, I think I understand where you're coming from. I agree with Mr. Federer that, um, asking about who organized it or those kinds of questions, I think that is a fair question. Um, but when it comes to what was discussed, obviously what happened in executive session stays in executive session. However, um, I think there is a, a, a third thing to think about is that when in executive session, the dialogue that happens there is generated by the people who are attending. So certainly the planning board could have generated questions, concerns, discussion points. So that's, so asking about who is involved in the preparation of whatever questions went into it, that's, you know, who, were you involved? I think that's a fair question, but...
What I'm trying to get at, Councilor, is that when a planning board goes into executive session, or anyone else goes into executive session, they must precisely indicate the very purpose and reason and what's going to be discussed going to executive session. Okay, it isn't, it isn't the meeting where everybody calls together and you go, it's not a gathering, okay, it's not an assembly, okay? The planning board itself, okay, if it wanted to go into executive session and had a purpose for that, okay, would have, would have indicated that purpose and then moved forward with an executive session. Now, let me ask you this. Now, on the executive session, okay, you all showed up, planning board, right?
We showed up at a meeting of the board of selectmen.
Okay. Did you vote to go into the executive session?
The planning board did not vote to do any such thing. We, we're not in charge of the meeting at that point.
Who was in charge?
I'm not sure. Were we in charge of it?
You called it, you called it...
I called, I called it.
You, 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 you had us go into executive session.
Okay.
Yes, you did.
I had us go into executive session at the request of the board of selectmen and the town attorney, so we did.
Did you vote to go into executive session?
We, we, we must have. I, Mr. Federer, I understand, I have to tell you, this was at the busiest possible time of the year for, for the business that I'm in. I might be a little fuzzy on the details.
Oh, I understand. Did, did you guys vote? You, because, because there's no record of a vote in the minutes, okay?
Okay.
Did you determine what issues would be discussed before you walked into that room?
No.
Now, do you recall if the selectmen voted to go into the executive session?
I don't remember.
I don't believe it's in there, may I ask?
I think this was a joint meeting where the people just there is wanting, it wasn't a, wasn't a, our meeting, their meeting, it was a joint meeting. I mean, that was my understanding.
And that brings up my next question. Did you gentlemen vote to allow the selectmen to come into your executive session, and did they do the same?
I think I've already said I don't remember.
Okay, you understand where I'm, where I'm going with this? An executive session, okay, an executive session, okay? You really need to, really, really need to look at executive session, okay? It's a very, very particular...
Let's put it this way, look this out. One thing, we don't do it often, so it's not, it's not like, it's not like we do it every day, so I mean, uh, it's like, uh, you know, a new girlfriend. I mean, you know...
Executive sessions are, are, are extremely limited by the state because of the, uh, the Freedom of Access Act, okay? They want all meetings about any person or anything to be as public as possible. If there's a reason for an executive session where you have a, a meeting where you go in, okay, and discuss a certain particular issue because it really shouldn't be, you know, a public issue, okay, then you, you get together, find out what that issue is, okay, and, you know, if, if, if it's to discuss an issue with the town attorney, that issue is sort of put together. Now, the problem here is, what you guys thought was an executive session, okay, couldn't possibly have been an executive session because none of the rules were followed, and you had a general purpose, reason for going into the executive session, okay? And that's why I want you to go to the part about the, uh, the purpose of the executive session.
Mr. Senator?
Yeah.
Say, again, give a little... Um, so say we didn't follow the rules of order for a meeting. What does that have to do with our bias against the...
Well, see, now, 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 something I want to make sure you gentlemen understand. This is not a, this is not saying you guys are, have a, have bad feelings or are wrong and did something wrong. It's like, it's like when a jury, okay, goes into session, okay? Uh, so I was telling recently that, which is very uncommon, a couple of jurors watched the news, okay? They found out information about the, uh, the individual that was on trial, and the judge immediately recused him, okay? Not because of the fact that they, you know, possessed any ill will or anything, but they have learned something that they, that they shouldn't have learned and couldn't be determined a matter in an unbiased fashion. Unbiased, it means, you know, becoming, looking at it clean, new, like you've never heard of it before, okay? When you have an individual, doesn't matter if it's the town planner, anybody else comes in and they start talking about Du Bois Livestock renewal permit, and they start talking about it not being complete, and start talking about the fact that, well, you know, I think they need a, need a, need a survey, and they need this, I think they need that, all of a sudden, okay, you know, the hearing board is tainted. There's no way.
That's factual.
No, 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 it's not factual.
Sure is.
But even if it is factual...
It is fact, if, whether, whether something was submitted, whether it was complete, there's a checklist of things, that's all factual.
Excuse me, excuse me, the, the issues that were brought up having to do with the survey, okay, was something that they were going to, you guys were supposed to require us the next time we came in, not, not because we didn't submit it, because the next time we're supposed to come in... come in.
What survey?
No, 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 you don't understand. It's all right in a sense if you're just the guy down the street. It's not all right if you're the hearing board. It's like somebody feeding the judge information that he's not supposed to hear and he's the one trying the case.
I don't even know what survey you're talking about.
Yeah, I don't either, you just lost big doggy.
I'm sorry. What did I lose you?
Survey, survey. How did we get the-
Well, I'm choosing either, on January 15th, on January 15th, okay, amidst this discussion about completeness, okay, Mr. Redway started bringing up, okay, issues that had nothing to do, okay, with our permit in a sense of completeness. It had to do with what you guys should be ordering us to do, okay, in our next application, which included supposedly a survey, okay? He even went on to comment about the one that we'd already submitted, which dealt with the, uh, NRCS, is that who it is? It was the NRCS, okay? It had nothing to do, okay, with completeness. It had to do with the discussion about the boy's livestock renewal permit, the content, the issue of whether or not it should be granted under what conditions. Once that happens, okay, you know, it starts to become a, a problem. And then going into an executive session and discussing the general nature of the boy's livestock, okay, you guys have got all this information about us, okay, and we don't even know what you got, okay?
We didn't get anything. I have nothing to do with it. At first of all-
Meeting has an hour and twenty minutes, guys, and it wasn't like you sat there in the pump, okay?
First of all, you said January 15th.
That was when you-
On the whole stuff?
Yes.
I wasn't even there.
You weren't there.
No. So I mean, how could you say I was being there when I wasn't even there because I was out snowplow?
I didn't say you were there.
You said everybody was there.
Okay, well, and I'm sorry, Marty, I left, should have left you out. Everyone was there except Marty. Was there anybody else that wasn't there on January 15th?
Is that the executive session?
No, no, no.
That was April 2nd, April 2nd, everybody was there except Mr.-
Is this part of, was this part of the-
I was here.
Yeah, we went in the executive-
That was not an executive session.
That wasn't executive, that was a regular meeting. I don't say-
So in January 15th, hey, January 15th was a regular meeting. So any information that would have come, that would have been a public meeting, it, so you've got it because it's on file. Whatever is presented to us, we have our own checklist that, irregardless of what he says, it's black and red and yellow, we have a checklist that the majority of this board has to go through and either agree or disagree.
Right.
Disagree to.
But we weren't on, we weren't on the agenda. We weren't there.
Yeah, but we weren't-
On the agenda, this, this planner's business, I think that's-
Oh, a planner's report.
Planner's report. And I believe, if I recall correctly, the question was to the town planner on, on, for an update on, on your application, and the response was something was missing out. I don't remember exactly.
Well, when I, when I listened to it, which was a few days ago, he brought the subject up unilaterally itself, but it doesn't matter what he asked or whether or not.
And, and honestly, that's quite possible because we ask the town planner what's, what's coming up. What, what are we, when he gives us his, his report, he tells us about different applications that have come in, different things that we are going to be facing at some point in the future.
It's routine, it's, it's a meeting.
Let's talk about this application process because I, I think that, you know, it's really worth looking at in the sense that, you know, I, there, there is a, there's a section of your, of your ordinance that says in relation to the condition of use, that the planning board makes a decision of whether or not it is complete or not, okay? That's, that's in those, in those sections.
The total application is the point, not the submission.
What is the submission to the application?
So, well, the appli, the application, you take it and told you, we have enough information that what you've submitted to come to the conclusion that you're good to go. If the submissions are, if you're missing acts, we would never get that information, there's no reason for you to come to us because we'd have to deny it.
Okay, now, let me ask you this.
Excuse me, does this have to do with bias?
Yeah. Well, because the bias is created from the very beginning because we don't get a fair hearing, okay, from the planning board because when we submitted our renewal on December 9th, okay, this thing was, 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 was rolled around and left in his office for four and a half months.
No, it was left in his office until the next meeting of the planning board when we asked the town planner about the completeness of the application and he informed us that it was not complete. Part of the application, on the application itself, it indicates that you have to provide nine or ten copies to the planning board.
Which we didn't.
It also indicates that the codes enforcement officer, as part of our regulation, has to submit a letter verifying certain information.
And he did not.
And he did not.
That's the, that's the final plan, we don't have to get that, you have to get that, right?
Therefore, this application is incomplete.
First off, that was never even a discussion at this, at this thing, okay? The problem is, okay, what I'm trying to get to is the fact that when, when, when we submitted it, okay, you rattled it around on January 15th because he brought it up.
Okay.
And then nothing was done until April. I don't care if, if, if there, is there a procedure when, uh, an application isn't complete, what do you do?
We, we don't do anything with it because it does not come across, it is an incomplete application.
So it just sits? We submitted it, it's not complete, so it sits. We don't get notified it's not complete. We don't get told it's not complete, it just sits and he holds it. He has a power to hold it no matter what, okay? He has a power to determine completeness no matter what. There was no checklist given to you as to why it wasn't complete. I'm not hurt to take. Okay, I mean, and the problem is, I'm saying, if we submitted it on December 9th, on December 10th, it isn't complete, why didn't we get a notice? Why didn't we get a notice on January 15th? We got a notice on April 23rd.
Okay.
And that's okay?
No, I'm saying that's okay because you're saying you got notified on April 23rd.
Now, you tell me why that doesn't show, you know, you know, procedural bias in relation to us?
But is it, I'm trying to follow.
Yes.
How is that board bias? We're here to-
Because it's your board that's supposed to deal with our application.
But this is, you're dealing with things way before the board even sees them.
But you, that's, but that's what I mean, it shouldn't be that way, the board should see them, the board should know.
Hang on, hang on, whether the board should see them, whether the board should, no, does not prove bias on the part of the board, one way or the other.
When you create a, a procedure, okay, by word of mouth, whatever it is, okay, that ensures that you do not get our permit, okay, and that we do not get notice of that permit, okay, it falls on the shoulders of the planning board. You can't transfer that responsibility, it's yours. You guys did not do anything to make sure we got our stuff, it's not his job. It's not his job, he can sit on it, it's your job.
How is it my job? You know what I'm gonna be like?
You're sure?
Wait, 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 let me finish. How is it my job to know if it's complete or not to call you? Because I'm not in that office, okay? I'm only here at the planning board when we have a planning board meeting.
Right.
Okay? And it's not my job to turn, I go up there and it's not like I'm repairing a car up there, okay?
I understand, my-
So it's simple and plain, how can I turn, I do that if it's, if I don't know?
And that is exactly why there's bias created because there is no-
It's not by me.
By, by the entire board, not by me.
How is it, because we all have other lives to live.
True, but you're members of the planning board.
And what days do we meet?
I don't care, you have a duty in that regard because you're the planning board.
And, and I would say that you, as the applicant, should have come to the planning board and said, "What is the status of my application?" If, if we did not get back to you in what you consider a timely fashion, you should have come to us. We did get back to you and we did schedule a time for you to, to have a hearing, at my insistence, by the way, because I, I felt-
Because all of a sudden, you know, you realize, you said four and a half months and you should have done something about it.
No, I thought we should, we should have you come to us and present to us whether or not this application was complete so that we could make a decision. We had a meeting on April 23rd, you were notified that that was the purpose of the meeting, and you chose not to participate. You chose to say, "I'm going to address a bias issue first and I'm not ready to discuss the completeness of an application."
And, and that's not the issue we're talking about, we're talking about the fact that it waited until the 23rd. Come on, I mean, what are we thinking there? Why do you do it? No, no, this idea that we're supposed to come, we submitted the, 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 uh, the application, okay, is it, was there, did we even get a receipt? Do you have a method for getting a receipt, a procedure?
I do not know the procedure at Town Hall because we don't get those receipts.
But as a planning board member, isn't it a critical and non-dealable duty to ensure that any time that a permit is, is presented to the town clerk or the town whoever, planner, okay, that you have noticed that it exists, that it's been, it's set, and if it is not complete, there must be some method by the planning board to provide notice to that individual that it's not complete?
Well, that, that's not a bad suggestion, maybe there's some procedures that, that we should work on, but, but that's not, that's not a point of bias.
Of course there's a point of bias because we sat there for four and a half months, okay, without the ability to, to even have our matter heard because you guys just let it go. And I mean, it may have been, it may have been negligence or design, it doesn't matter, the fact that you said, well, you know, it's, it's much like the, uh, the police officer who sits down and watches, you know, you know, a couple of thugs beat the hell out of a black guy. Well, it wasn't a-
Come on, come on, stick to the issue of the bias.
Wait, you sit down, okay?
Mr. Federer? You do not get chastised, members of the audience, stick to the issue of the-
Then you have to, please pass the audience off to chastise me.
I will. John?
Oh, don't leave, we're not done. Anyway, now, can we move on to the issue of our-
I have a question though before you get there. You said it was, when, was it four months, April something that, before?
April 23rd.
23rd, so, uh, I don't remember the meetings prior to that with different, uh, planners' reports and, or if we had asked for what, what the, what the, an update on, on your application was, I don't remember anything between there. Are there any record of anything or?
The minutes of the meeting on April 9th would indicated that I had directed the town planner to put the application on the agenda for April 23rd and to notify Mr. Federer and the two boards that we were going to be holding a hearing in terms of completeness of the application.
And there was reason why we didn't receive that as an application, if it wasn't submitted, what, if things were still missing.
That is correct.
And if there was still missing, I think it, it might be up, up to the applicant to fall through and ask, check with the town planner or-
Even, even given that there may have been things missing, it was not possible because of the winter that we had for the codes enforcement officer to get out there and look.
But, see, this is where I'm getting confused, in this time, in this time period, there was a lot of other things going, and we were going to this board and that board and ports all over the place. I know if my name has been brought up, I'd ask what the status was of the board because I wanted to kind of move on and let's get this stuff done, what, what came of it. But our job as the planning board, we did do our job, that we put conditions on your last approval, which gave you a timely time when you had to submit, you had to allow the code enforcement officer, and this, by understanding, where, I can't tell you right now, but that, he, you wouldn't, I think it was in your correspondence actually, in one of your, your letters, you, you, you wouldn't allow the code enforcement officer on to rummage and steal or something.
No, not rummage.
I don't, I don't remember your exact words, but that was, that was from you, so-
Yes.
So he couldn't go on to do the reports that are, are, I mean, that's how I was reading all this stuff going back and forth.
First off, first off, okay, there's, there's an issue, I mean, it's one thing to pass an ordinance that says that you want your town CEO to repair a report, there's another thing, okay, to expect that ordinance to create the, the, the right for that individual to go onto the property, okay? There, there is no, there is no such right, okay?
I, I'm not speaking for local boards, but I deal with state permits on a daily basis, and in every one, there is the right for a state agency representative to come onto, onto our property where I work to review things associated with that permit. So don't, please don't say that that's not a right.
I don't believe it's a right, and I had a right to assert-
I think the attorney general would disagree.
Well, he may get an opportunity to do that, just keep going the way it's going. Okay, but all I'm trying to do is point out, okay, that, that everything that we're here, I'm talking about, has a form of bias to it, okay? Now, when we get to the, the issue of the, of the executive session, okay, not discussing the content, okay, and I want you to go to the first part where we were talking about the purpose and intention of the assembly and the guidance of execution.
So, I had a question before.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I had a question to the chair.
Yes.
Chair, do we have a procedure, because I have never noticed it, okay? A stamp? Usually when we turn out, have stamps, turn out, it says paid, not pages, that and the other. Do we have a stamp or even a date stamp of a date when something is received in Town Hall? I'm asking a question.
No, I don't, I don't believe the Town Hall does.
Or, or to the planner with a date received or anything else. I think to the, that may be something, something, you know, a rubber stamp turns as received, you know, excepting that we something really else.
So, a question, when you dropped, when you did submit anything that you did, did you ask whoever you dropped off, was there anything else that we need? What else do you need from, what, did you ever ask that of, of any of the town employees?
No, because you had it to the clerk, she wouldn't know.
So you just dropped something off to the left?
That's what you do, we just submit a permit, you drop it off and, and then-
Most, most people drop it off with the town planner.
Okay, well, we dropped it off with the clerk, okay, and that, that seems to be the general procedure, okay? And if you drop it off the town planner, you can drop it off a table, okay? The idea is, we dropped it off, okay, and the darn thing sat for four and a half months and nobody did anything about it.
Okay.
Okay, and I think that's a form of bias, okay? Irrespective of how it was created, okay, our, our document was left sitting and it shouldn't have been, okay? Whether by access or design, okay?
Was there any correspondence between you and town staff through that period of time?
Oh, my God, we, probably, I would think that we've had more than that, all kinds of-
We're talking about the period between January 15th and April 9th.
Or December.
When we said that we were going to put you on the agenda. Well, after, between January 9th and, uh, between December 9th and January 15th, there were no-
Somebody was in the Town Hall.
Right.
Somebody was in the Town Hall.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just saying, just-
I'm asking from, from you, or people that you represent to, to any, any town, other town employee regarding the application?
You know, I, I don't know because, because we have, we have quite a few documents going back and forth, and I do not know if this particular issue was submitted.
So it's, it's possible that it was the subject, that you did have correspondence, you just don't know at this point, which is, I mean, it's not a bad thing, I'm just asking.
I can't guess, so I, I don't know if there's a point of bias behind it.
You got CRX, Jim.
Yep.
Can't remember something?
Hang on, hang on just for a second.
I can say that there was no communication between the applicant and the major's executive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, let's move on to the, the issue I was talking about as far as the executive session, okay? Because that deals with the, the information that was discussed in the executive session theoretically, okay? Now, the existing town manager, okay, page after the first section of, uh, emails by purpose and intention of assembly under guidance of executive session, give a second. Okay, go to the very first, uh, page there, I've got it underlined, okay, about what do you like, what do your town manager like? "I would like a written presentation, simple outline, of the different options that the town has in dealing with the farm, and I would like the options to include the positives and negatives of each option. I think this is important to guide the discussion and center on outcomes, precise and to the point of what the town is, and these are, up against, and what the planning board might consider to do about it. When we leave that meeting, I would like the board to have decided on their plan of action that can be provided to you and the selection." Okay.[1792.82] Okay, that's a general discussion, gentlemen. I think of the content.
Okay, here, we're, gotta get Attorney Fallow. Okay, you're citing a meeting between the town manager, code enforcement man, and our town attorney to demonstrate board bias. We're here for board bias.
Okay, okay. Understand some of the script. I cannot go into the executive session. I, even, whether it was correct or not or anything else, I'm not committed to ask questions about the content of the executive session. I only have the ability, okay, to take the surrounding information that I, that deals with, and that's what this is, okay? It's because, okay, this is supposed to be the content of the meeting, okay? If that is the content of the meeting, okay, and the, it would, it would indicate clearly, okay, that information was, was disseminated amongst the groups, okay, to the planning board about DuBois livestock and renewal, the outcomes, okay, and, and almost every issue you can think of. So, there's no way in the world, if you went to that meeting, that you could not be biased against the DuBois farm. In fact, they refer to it here as the farm.
I see they want the option to include the positive and negative of each option. Looking, looking for...
Exactly, no, but I mean, I mean, what I'm trying to say is...
Bystic answer.
If this, if this was a public meeting, you know, this would be great, okay? If you get everybody together, have a public meeting, everyone wants to hash it out what they think, that'd be great. But it's an executive session, okay? You gentlemen are supposed to take something and look at it without bias, without, without any, any predetermined ideas of what you're gonna do, okay? That meeting had to at least give you, okay, enough information, okay, that you could not ignore, okay? If I'm doing anything about, can't do it, okay? There was information that was disseminated to you, okay, that creates bias, whether you intended to be biased or not. In other words, you know, a fair, you know, hearing by people who just look at the subject and move forward with it, okay, without all of the other information, okay?
And, and Mr. Federer, I would say to you that at this time, the Wando Planning Board did exactly that because of the next scheduled meeting we put you on the agenda so that we could move forward.
So, okay, that very thing, my, you know, that very thing is, is the reason that the executive session created the bias, okay?
No, it isn't.
Oh, no, it is biased. I mean, I understand that it is, it's, it's a concept that you have to understand from, from the point of view of just standing back and saying objectively, not subjectively, I, I know you don't hate us, okay?
That's what bias, as far as I'm concerned, means.
Okay, and it's, it doesn't, it means, it means...
I mean, we, you think we're, we're gonna call it a bunch of pukes or anything else? Some way, bias means we have an objective idea already, and we haven't made a judgment or anything else because we have nothing to look at.
But you have, you, at the meeting, okay, you will provide the information, okay, that went into your brains, into your minds.
So, so does the jury.
I'm not sure about the executive session now.
No. We're basically saying that because we had an executive session, somebody must have told us something about the operation at DuBois that created bias in our mind.
No, it created any kinds of opinion, good or bad, good or bad.
And, and I would argue, you used a reference earlier to a courtroom where if a juror saw something, that the judge would recuse them, but the judge is well aware of the fact that those are human beings and they may have seen something before they ever got in. I've served on juries. One of the questions that is always asked is, even if you have heard about this, are you capable of making a decision without allowing exterior forces to influence your decision? You're claiming that none of us are capable of doing.
I'm saying that, that based on the fact that this was probably the content of that meeting, you will provide information that you should not have that has created some sort of bias in relation to our application and should be heard by somebody else. Now, and...
Okay, do you have, do you have more evidence?
Well, let's go on, go on to the, uh... Now, I do, I did put together the, uh, the fact that the executive session was put together by, uh, by the town CEO, the town manager, the town planner, and the town attorney.
And whether they, whether they put it together or not, the fact, it is irrelevant to, to whether or not the board is biased. In any way, the fact that somebody else put together a meeting between the planning board and the board of selectmen...
Somebody has to line the dots up to get this began.
Bias in any way?
Well, you know, and I, and I find it very hard to understand that, that you can't understand that the fact that you were in that meeting and secured and acquired information that you should not have been told or not have heard or not have even discussed, okay, has not created, okay, bias irrespective of whether or not, okay, you feel that you're biased, okay?
I can't get into discussing what was in that meeting to refute whether or not I heard anything that, about you. We can't even discuss it, whether or not we heard anything about DuBois.
I understand, but, but the fact that I have the town manager indicating the purpose and the fact that the, that the entire meeting was not put together by the planning board at all, okay? Their own executive session was just, was just a mechanism to go into a, a room and discuss DuBois livestock. In fact, you didn't even notice it.
I understand it was noticed, that, but we had, we did have a regular meeting that night, and I believe that the first item on that agenda at six o'clock would have been an executive session.
Yeah, yeah, but that's all it said.
And that's all it has to say.
Oh, it has to say.
It does not have to, it cannot, in my opinion, it should not indicate who we are going to discuss in the executive session.
Or what?
You, you, you most certainly must, okay? The statute is pretty good.
When I've looked at the selectmen's meetings, okay, minutes or anything else, it usually says in article L sixty-nine, twenty-nine, thirty-two, okay? Executive session, that's all it says. It doesn't say, doesn't say nick, nick, who, what, where, and why. It just usually gives a, some kind of scribble numbers. So, what numbers those are, I have no idea.
So, the individual who's the subject matter of the executive session doesn't have those, notice.
Well, you look at, look at the selectmen's, anytime they go into an executive session.
I understand that...
I'm just using that as an example.
I don't think we're off track, Mr. Federer. I think the issue is, is you went into a meeting, okay, a general meeting, okay, that was orchestrated by the, by, not by the planning board, not by the selectmen, okay? By the town attorney, Ken Ridway, the CEO, and, and, uh, town manager. Now, I mean, I understand, you know, the best of intentions, okay? There's no saying, road to hell is paved with the best of intentions, okay? They may have wanted to do something good or, or they may have wanted to do something bad. We don't know. But the problem is, okay, you created a session that should have been public and you heard things about us, okay, and we don't even know what you heard. And if we have the right to presume, okay, that you're biased. You scare us to death when that sort of stuff happens.
Next item on the agenda? Do you have more stuff to show us?
Uh, just the, uh, thing I gave you when we got to the drawl or, uh... Now, let me ask you this, okay? When do you guys think you can go through this thing and make a decision whether or not you're biased?
I can make a point, I can make a point right now. I'm not biased, simple and plain.
Okay, so, I, I think he presents a valid question.
If I'm biased?
No, 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 whether, whether or not there is bias on the part of the board, it is up to the applicant to prove bias. And the question that I would have to the board is whether or not the applicant has met that hurdle, has he proved bias?
Mr. Chair, can I just, for a point of procedure, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Oh, absolutely.
Just a different, I'm not sure, first and foremost, that the applicant has finished with his presentation. Um, but with that said, once he has and it's time to make the decision, I think it's important to broaden the lens just a bit and to talk again because you're, you're determining whether or not there's bias. And I think that in a situation like this, it's really important to have some kind of findings of fact on that issue, um, which I'm happy to, you know, describe and produce that if you're, if you're so inclined. Um, but I think it's really important to ju, just get a couple of concepts again. This is not factual, I'm not in any position to be making any suggestions or even suggestions on facts, but as a town attorney, a couple of legal matters that I just wanted to talk about.
Okay.
First and foremost, if you're making a determination on if there is bias, I think it's important to refresh the memory of the board what bias is. And I don't need to be the dead horse, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but, um, you know, the one side is that will, it, it's all about due process, making sure the applicant has a fair shake. There's a conflict of interest branch of the due process. And I don't think, if I'm hearing correctly, Mr. Federer, you're not saying it's a conflict of interest based on statutory definitions of financial, somebody on the board has a financial issue or, um, okay? So, then it's really about the whole concept of bias. And the concept of bias has to do with family relationships, i.e., are you related to somebody within, and I'm throwing some legal jargon at you, but it's statutory, within the sixth degree of consanguinity. So, what that means is, you know, cousins, second cousins, all of this stuff. It's a family bias, okay? That's the first aspect of bias. And again, I'm not sure if that's an allegation, but that's one aspect. The other aspect is you're not getting a fair shake because either you have prejudged the issue and how is that evidence? That is evidenced by comments made out in the public that I hate composting operations, I hate, fill in the blank, something that would relate to this, or some evidence that suggests, and I, and I think, you know, Mr. Federer is making those submissions to you and it's your determination whether, um, the evidence presented would support a conclusion that, that you are biased because you have prejudged it, you have made negative statements, those kinds of things, okay? So, I just wanted to make sure we are clear for the record what bias is um, so that you can now make a factual determination if in fact the applicant has made all submissions that he chooses to, um, issue.
I believe this, gentlemen, I submit this, I, I'd like you to go through it, put it in, through the determination. I don't want you guys to, you know, just to, to take what I've said and, and not appreciate the content of it. I didn't mean to upset Mr. Agindran. I was just giving him a standard example of, of, you know, of, of just sitting back and watching. It's, it's the, it's the one they use everywhere. I didn't mean to be offensive to him. But what I really think is important is that it be decided and looked at to see if there isn't some truly functional bias here. And that's why I'm here today, because I really feel you guys, bless your hearts, are biased, whether you want to be biased or not, or whether you feel you're biased or not. I'd like you to look over the information that I have, okay, that indicates to me, okay, that you have acquired information, heard things, okay, that cannot, you know, prevent us to have a fair hearing before you, so...
A couple of, just legal points. Um, I, I drafted down a couple of legal things. There is one, um, point that Mr. Federer made at the outset about the new statute, the statute that was enacted regarding agricultural composting operations being included within the umbrella of the, um, MAPPA, the MAPPA, the main agricultural protection act. And that was, if you may or may not recall, the litigation that we had previously, the law court said, no, um, agricultural composting is, correct me if I'm wrong, they decided agricultural composting operations are not a farm and therefore don't fall within the protections of the agricultural protection act. This statute, I think, pretty much says, well, now they are. But one thing I did, I actually brought the case with me, the law court case, and I did just mark this, this, this verbiage that the court said, is that even if DuBois's operation were a farm, the agricultural protection act does not preempt the town ordinance, although the act prohibits a municipality from determining that a farm's method of operation violates local ordinance if the farm has used best management practices. There is no indication that enacting the agricultural protection act, the legislature intended to preempt any ordinance or occupy a field. In fact, the agricultural protection act explicitly states it does not affect municipal authority to enact ordinances. Now, I know that right now you're not deciding that issue, you're on the bias issue, but I heard also on the table perhaps is a request to the judge.
Yeah, because, and I'll explain that to you real quick, okay? The issue of the request is, it's a, the application is under, under, under a solid waste statute, okay? Our problem is now, uh, they have defined and determined that composting is an agricultural product. So, we've been removed from that particular section into a completely different section. It also creates a composting, uh, operation, you know, without the issue of having to be a farm. In other words, because they are composting agriculturally, they become a farm, okay? And the reason we're withdrawing our permit is because the last time we came in front of you gentlemen, a long, long time ago, and it's probably true, if we allow, okay, the permit, okay, to go through as we've stated it, okay, without some determination by an impartial board, okay, that they believe, one way or another, whether or not the statute still sticks to us and whether or not, okay, we should be making the application at all, okay? We're withdrawing our application until that can be hashed out. Understand?
No.
Oh, my God.
It seems to be two, two issues here. There's the issue of bias and there's the issue of whether or not the application is even before you. So, to me, it seems a little bit like we're putting the cart before the horse. If in fact the applicant is withdrawing the application, then that's the threshold issue and bias is not an issue. However, these are issues, let, let's be clear. The court also said that if, if, and again, the applicant has to clarify whether or not they even want you to hear their application sounds. But the court has made very clear that administrative boards, this board, planning board, zoning board of appeals, selectmen, do not make determinations regarding preemption issues, i.e., does the agricultural protection act trump the local ordinance? That is a determination for the court to make. And so, if the applicant wishes this board to consider the renewal application, then, then you can, in your findings of fact, say, we can't deal with preemption and their case law to support that.
This is the preemption issue. This is a whether or not we now, because of the change in the statute, whether or not we are under the solid waste...
I certainly understand that, Mr. Federer, but what you need to decide and to tell this board is whether or not you even want them to consider your application.
We probably withdrew it because we don't want that.
Then, then why are we having a bias?
Because the bias question has to do with the fact that, that the second issue we raised in, in our, in our withdrawal is the fact that they need to make a decision whether or not we need to file one or not.
I, I think the fact that we hear...
That sounds contradictory. You're asking us whether or not you need to file one application and you've withdrawn.
Based on the new regulation.
Okay. That makes sense.
That's the first that I can think of. Safety, plain simple word, safety, okay? If it's upheld and then it says you don't need it, okay? But in case they say you do need it, yeah, at least you have the life ring out there so that the application is in the process of being done, so you don't lose...
So, what we need to do is instead of withdrawing it, we ask you guys to hold it. Don't make a decision on it because we think the law may kick us out. Can you guys do that or go after withdrawal? I mean, that's, that's a circumstance I have. Bystic or not, you guys gotta give your...
First, let's address the whole issue of bias because this is the next item that's on the agenda. So, we should go through the agenda and address the bias issue first.
Okay.
Okay? And we need, if there are any findings of fact. Okay, yes, please.
One other legal point is, I know that one of the submissions and a lot of exchange back and forth was with respect to the issue of whether, just by having an executive session and perhaps discussion, discussing issues regarding DuBois livestock generally, DuBois livestock application. Um, you know, my interpretation of the executive session law is pretty clear that under section four oh five, six E, which was noticed in that agenda, talks about the right of a board to confer with counsel regarding, and I'm, I'm not reading it directly, but I think it says rights and duties or rights and obligations regarding the pending applications, that kind of thing. So, there's the part that I think everybody knows about that if there's pending litigation, you can talk about your, uh, with your attorney. But there's also talking about the rights and obligations and duties of a board. So, I, I think it's, it just from, again, I've been a municipal attorney for quite a few years now, that it is often the case that prior to a meeting on a pending application... now, that it is often the case that prior to a meeting on a pending application, whether it be the planning board, whether it be zoning board, whether it be any board, that the town attorney comes in prior to that meeting, often on the same day, to discuss the rights and obligations of that board. So, I just leave that to you.
Okay, counsel, I'm going to say something. If you come to the planning board and start talking to them about what was going to be in that executive session, that may have been one thing. You didn't talk to them. You talked to this gentleman, the town manager, and the CEO, okay? And it's, that makes a big...
Mr. Federer, I'm not here to address you. I, at the, at the pleasure of the board, I will answer any question, but I think they need to ask me.
Okay. But that's, that's the long and short of what I was trying to explain. Is the planning board had nothing to do with creation of the executive session, okay? It didn't even have anything to do with the agenda, what was going to be input into the discussion, okay? It all was, was a manifestation of, you know, again, the town manager, town planner, town CEO, and town attorney, okay? Now, that, of course, I think is, does not comply at all with the executive session. Also, okay, you can't use the executive session, okay, to undermine the Freedom of Access Act, okay? You can't have, you can't have the executive session under the guise of, well, we're talking attorney, and discuss everything that was in the manager's citation of what it was you were going to discuss. This was not a question, questions posed to the attorney, this was a question posed to everybody for this open discussion. I can send it. Okay, I'm done.
Okay. As a town attorney, do a finding of fact.
Well, I think you have to talk about what bias is, and whether...
Oh, okay.
At least you have criteria.
Well, I've already heard from a couple of people.
Okay.
And maybe we should clarify from Mr. Federer, are you looking for each determination, whether each individual board member is biased or the board is biased?
Both. Either individually biased, or the whole entire board is biased. I believe under the circumstances, with all due respect, the board is biased.
Okay, so you're looking for a determination that, A, the board is or is not biased, and B, whether or not each individual member of the board is or is not biased?
Yes, you should, you should use that with each of you.
Okay. Well, this will be interesting, should we...
Well, I'll start over here, from one, with all due respect, in all of the presentation, and trying to get through this, and trying to understand really bias in the terms that you're kind of presenting it at the board. I believe individually, the evidence that you have shown goes to potentially some lack of administrative function and coordination. I fail to see that, that evidence is strong enough to support that I would be biased one way or the other, positive or negative, nor that the board would be because of a procedural thing, right? So that's where Bob's going.
Okay. Marty?
As far as I'm concerned, I wasn't there July 15th, or January 15th, as previously being accused of being there, okay? But as being, saying being biased to any applicant over the past years, I've been more pro-business than anything else, so I can't say you think that I'm being biased.
Okay. Jamie?
I would concur a lot with what Bob says, and that there may be some things we could bolster in our administrative processes, but from the information that I've heard, and my understanding of the definition of bias, that I couldn't subjectively look at their application and make an unbiased type of decision. So I don't think I'm biased in any way towards the applicant.
Tom?
I think, based on my many years on the board, because I spent four, as many times that I've been here, and I think every time, my approach has been look for the solution. And I've always been glad when we found a way to keep you guys moving forward. And that's always been my approach. And as far as the legal definitions are not related to family, I'm not prejudging anything, I'm just looking forward to it as an opportunity to have an unbiased opportunity to look at your application. So I see no problem with me looking at your application in a fair, just manner.
I feel the same way as Tom, and I've been on this board quite a long time, and I don't think that the board has acted in any biased manner against any applicant that's come to my disposal. None of us have a vested interest in the town other than what's beneficial to the town.
When I think of bias, I think of the inability to take whatever information I may or may not have, and set it aside, and address the issue in front of me. I do not think I am biased, I think I am perfectly capable of looking at an issue and judging it based on its merits. So I do not think that I am biased. That being said, should we have this as a...
I can make a motion.
Hang on, I just have a question for the attorney, in terms of whether or not this would be a voice vote or a written ballot, in terms of each individual member.
I think if people are certain comfortable with it, the issue remains, but I think maybe there are two motions, one on an individual...
You need them, Martin.
Yes, yeah, I was going to do it, one person at a time, and then as a vote.
So, can I say something? Do you see the motion as appropriate, or is it...
Well, so it's in the record.
Well, I know, but...
No, so it's in the record.
I know it's in the record, but not the motion.
But guess what, if it's a motion...
Marty, hang on, let me finish.
I just, I, you know, it's a, it's a determination, instead of not making a motion.
You didn't listen to my motion.
Okay, so hang on.
No, no, no.
You didn't listen to my motion yet.
Okay, go ahead. You actually raise a valid point, or at least I think you raise a valid point. Would it be just a determination that, for example, Bob is not biased, or do we need a motion that says that we think Bob is not biased?
No, my question, my question was to take a polling of individuals to see if we say we're biased or not. And then, secondly, to take a motion to vote if the board is biased or not. So it's a double sword.
It's my understanding that we have to vote on each individual.
That's what I said.
And we've already, we've already had our say. And so my question to the attorney is, do we just, do we say to, how many of you think that Bob is biased, or do we have a motion that says that Bob is not biased?
I would suggest the latter.
Okay, then I need, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we determine Bob is unbiased.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to determine that Bob Kuhn is an unbiased member of the board on this issue. All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Yeah, vote for yourself.
Okay.
One extension.
Now we need one for Marty.
Well, we make another motion, Marty is an unbiased member of the board.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to determine that Marty Kane is an unbiased member of the Arundel Planning Board for this issue. All those in favor? Oh, we should have discussion, any discussion?
Yeah, even though I disagree with Marty, and I have a lot of debates, I know he's unbiased, and he looks at the facts, and may not agree with me every time, but I'm sure he's unbiased.
All those in favor? An extension from Marty?
Yeah. I keep my mouth shut on that.
There you go. Jamie?
I'll make a motion, another motion, that Jamie is an unbiased member of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion, a motion has been made and seconded that Jamie is an unbiased member. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? Five, four, one extension.
I'd like to make a motion that Tom is an unbiased member of the planning board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that Tom McGinn is an unbiased member of the planning board in this issue. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry.
I'll be with Tom, we won't all be here.
All those in favor? And an extension. Roger?
I make a motion that Roger, unbiased member of the planning board.
I'll second that.
A motion's been made and seconded that Roger Martin is an unbiased member of the planning board in this issue. Any discussion? None, all those in favor? Five, four, one extension. Send the committee.
Make a motion that Rich is an unbiased member of the planning board.
President Chair.
President Chairman.
And you will have to take a vote?
Is, are there...
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
You said you have to take a vote?
Tom would have to do it.
He has to run it, because he can't run it himself, because you have a extension.
So all in favor of Rich being an unbiased member of the board? Not opposed, one extension.
Just one clarification for the purposes of the record, I heard some motions being formed in the question, unbiased in this matter. I think that's important.
Oh, I thought you did it in all.
The motion was...
Yeah.
I think we just need to clarify to the record that that was the intention.
Yes, it's in this matter.
Perfect.
Okay. Now, do we need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to the, to the board vote that we're unbiased, as a group.
As a group, okay.
I'll second that motion.
A motion has been made and seconded that the Arundel Planning Board is unbiased in this matter. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
There was some, can I just add a little bit of discussion?
Sure, absolutely.
There was some question about a determination, maybe Marty can just state that the board, that there's a determination that the board is not biased.
Okay.
I don't know if that, I don't know why it was important, but it is important.
Marty, would you, would you...
Second it.
Well, no, so Bob's going to amend it, and you're going to second it.
Yeah.
But I'm here, okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Who opposed? Motion genetics. Onto the next item on the agenda, and that is the question of the application. We have before us a letter to, they do not want to seek conditional use application.
I think they'd like to discuss...
And that's, I need to have that discussed, because I want to make sure that we get it right.
On June 5th, they amended the Right Farm Act, and they changed around significant issues in relation to composting being agriculture, an agricultural product, okay? The very statute that this application was presented under was solid waste statute. Now that composting has become an agricultural product, okay, it sort of reeks us from the realm of solid waste, okay? Also, we need to know whether or not, and the reason why we're thinking of withdrawing it, is we need to go on board whether or not, okay, we need to make that application. It takes a little study of the amendments, which I put in, I put in types of color, okay? So that you can make a determination. Yes, you think that if for us to, if we hope it's in advance as opposed to withdrawing, it's totally could be considered, okay? And that we can do as opposed to withdrawing. But somebody's going to have to make a decision about that, because it's a significant change in the statute.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Marty.
Where or how does that affect, per se, our ordinances of that being used in agricultural use? Because I do not think it spells it out, because everybody else is so hard on about word definition, where does this fall for our zoning or anything else?
That's, that's, that's the whole question, though, I mean, it's not, it's not something to answer like that.
That's why I brought it up, to show you that I'm not biased.
Oh, I appreciate that.
I think we would need some time to understand this, it's the first time.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just...
Sorry, what day?
Today's the...
What day is it going into the session?
Hang on, the town attorney...
Yeah, I mean, if you want to take some time to nubulate, I certainly appreciate that, but let me just kind of lay it out as I can, okay? So the question on the table is whether or not the application should be withdrawn in order to determine whether or not the Main Agricultural Protection Act is amended to include these agricultural composting operations as farms, right? So under the protection of this act. That's the question, right? It seems to me that that is a court, a determination for a court to make, right? But it doesn't yet to court unless there's a decision to appeal from. So either, if there is no decision made by this board on that issue, then we're kind of in no man's land, where there's no determination made, and we're all left with, oh, what do we do now? My recommendation, therefore, is to consider the application, and if the applicant says, hey, no, we're not, we're no longer within your jurisdiction because the Main Agricultural Protection Act now protects us, then so be it, a court can make that determination. You cannot. As I quoted from this decision, though, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that you have a land use ordinance, the town has a land use ordinance, that has its own, as you know, eloquently said, has all these different definitions. Those definitions are different from the state's definitions. Now, that's where we get into the preemption issue, that you cannot determine. However, again, in this very case that the court decided with respect to Du Bois, it says, even if Du Bois's operation were a farm, which it is now, under this statute, which hasn't actually, I don't think it's in effect yet, but it will be. So even if Du Bois's operation were a farm, the Agricultural Protection Act does not preempt the town ordinance. So, threshold issue, I think that you can decide that, you know what, in order for, you know, we talk about the desire for forward motion in this case, then there needs to be a decision so that an appeal can be made. And whether or not we would prevail is entirely up to the court, but based on this language, I think at least there's a straight faced argument that the ordinance is not preempted. But that's another conversation for another day.
And again, I'm going to say, say, the court also in that very decision, explain what it meant by preemption, okay? It meant that the ordinance, okay, you can make all the ordinances you want, okay? This issue with the Protection Act is not that that is preempted, is that the, that the act itself, okay, it prevents a town from finding somebody's violations of the ordinance. It's completely different from preemption. Preemption means you can't make the ordinance. This one says you can make the ordinance, but if they follow best management practices, then the opposite happens, the, 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 the ordinance is not affecting us to the farm. See what I'm saying?
I see.
It's not preempted. And I mean, really, too, I may disagree with counsel, okay? This town has litigated with us time after time, and I really think, you know, especially as much as they complain about the cost of going to the board, okay? But this, this board has the ability to sit down and look at a law, okay, and see if it applies to its own ordinances. That is not for our court to decide, that is for the people to decide, okay?
I would say that it is our job to look at the land use ordinance that the town of Arundel has enacted.
Right.
And to do whatever we think is appropriate in terms of staying within those bounds. It is not up to us to make a decision about whether to go to court, or to do, or to do anything else. That is a decision for the board of selectmen to make. I think that based on what I've heard from counsel, that we should proceed forward with an application. And that's my opinion. And I'm, and that is the discussion that the board has to have, as to whether or not we want to proceed forward and have this application go forward, or do you want to pull the application completely?
And while the whole idea of what we're doing is, the idea is of holding it in advance, gives you the opportunity to prepare the changes in state law that affect your ordinance. Like if the, right, the Farm Act affects the ordinance in the sense that it is not an ordinance that can be enforced.
That's an issue that we don't get to make a decision on, that is a court decision.
Well, you get to make it, you, I know, you get to make a decision when you're, when you're, when you're, when you're dealing with your, whether or not, for instance, like I asked, are we still under the ordinance, based on the fact that we are now a... like I asked, are we still under the ordinance, based on the fact that we are now a composting as agriculture?
And I understand what you're saying, but I'm, I'm operating from the point of view that, yes, you are still under the ordinance, because the land, the courts have not ruled otherwise. And as the attorney was so kind to point out, until this gets in front of the judge to make a ruling on that whole issue, I know, everybody can do whatever. I don't think it's fair of you or to the rest of the town to say, we'll hold this in advance until some point in the future when, when there is a decision that has been reached in a court case. I think we need to proceed forward at this point, determine whether or not we want the applicant to submit an application, and then they can make the decision as to whether or not they want to.
Well, see, the issue of submitting an application is, you know, we, at this point, depend because of the compost, okay, that we're not solid waste. So, you know, that is a decision for the planning board to determine, okay?
Which, which is the decision of whether or not we have you submit an application? And if we have, we submit an application?
It is.
We had an application.
We submitted it before the law, okay? Now, we need to know, if you guys want to look at it before we withdraw.
Okay. Gentlemen, do we want to look at this application?
Well, I think absolutely.
I say make a motion, we'll look at it.
Okay, a motion has been made to look at the application. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded that we review the application.
I'll link to this, it's completed.
No, we have to determine.
Okay, I'm sorry, then I, I'm tired.
Wait, wait, hold on. What, what I'm trying to get at is, we need, before you review the application under the, under the particular statute, I should determine whether your ordinance fits.
We need to determine whether or not we're going to review this application.
We...
If, if we, if we review the application, then we are taking the position that our ordinance fits with this application. So, okay. And that, and that is the position that we are going to. That's what we're discussing, whether or not we should do that.
We have, we have an application, let's see if that works.
We have an application before, so we have, we have advice from the attorney that says that we should do so.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion has been made and seconded that we look at this application to determine completeness. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Okay.
Okay.
The application is withdrawn, thank you.
The application is withdrawn, which is, which is your right. From this point on, it's up to the selectmen whether or not anything occurs, because it's no longer in front of the planning board.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Is there anything the public, the public would like to say about this issue? There be none? Planner's report and general discussion?
Do we have a planner's report?
No. Is that, no, that's in July, not in July. First meeting, first meeting in July. After the, after...
I'm just anxious.
It'll, it'll be after the first issue of...
I have a question.
Okay.
The question is, under ordinance is non-ordinance, new or old? Okay, question one, are they allowed to operate or not?
That is a decision for the board of selectmen to make.
It's not my hand.
No, 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 I understand that. But my reason is, actually, it's not the board of selectmen, it's what you've called.
To code enforcement officer. Has to decide whether or not to do anything, and then if he does something, he has to go to the board of selectmen and say, you know, this is what we're going to do.
Well, the reason I said to turn on, also to submit it, so it's a loophole, so that it turns out it's not canceled, so they don't have, it's because it's a non-conditional use in that particular area.
At this point, we shouldn't be discussing this.
We really shouldn't be discussing this.
I'm sorry, there.
Well, it's a public meeting, we have enclosed this session, they just walked out. We can discuss this. They opened it, the public, they're, they're in here.
I didn't care what the nature of the conversation was, but if the agenda says, we're talking about bias, we dealt with that, then the issue, I think, as it was on the agenda, was to discuss completeness, right?
Correct.
So, is that what we're talking about now?
Yeah.
I would not go anywhere else aside.
Yeah, I know.
Corners of the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, because it was going to... That applicant withdrew his application. Let's move on.
Yeah, he withdrew his application. It's up to the board of selectmen and the codes enforcement officer, what happens from this point.
Exactly.
Out of my hands. Okay? We have a planner's report. Do we have anything going on?
No, I don't think I want to report anything anymore.
Mr. Platter?
No.
Mr. Platter?
I would do.
I suggest...
Nothing's going on.
I suggest a stamp, receive date, so there's no questions, even if it's downstairs, upstairs.
We have it instituted now.
Huh?
It is in place now.
Yeah, but that isn't what he was clearly arguing. He didn't argue that they, they received it.
He argued the date, that we got it, and the fact that nothing occurred after that. So, I think we should probably, and it was a good idea that both you and Tom had, to institute some kind of a procedure to follow up on that, so that if something comes in that is incomplete, we have determined that the town planner has the right to say whether or not it is...
Just note, just note to sell, next town meeting, I know, considering you just had one, but that might be something in the ordinance to very clearly say. And I know it already says that you can delegate the preparation of the agenda, but make it super clear that the town planner is, and I know in certain aspects, like in subdivision, I think it says, it does not come before you unless and until the town planner has designated. But I don't think that happens in the site plan area. I'm just saying.
The worry is not there.
It may not.
Submission, the submission, completeness of the submission is still the planner's responsibility. The determination whether an applicant, applicant, application is complete.
Yeah.
And that all the material is available for them to make a reasonable, logical decision is an action that is taken by the board.
Absolutely. I'm just saying so that you never get in this situation again and have to, I mean, it's very clear, when they had the FOIA request, that there are minutes of the planning board in various applications that show that you've delegated that authority. I'm just saying, in the ordinance next go-round, it should just be made crystal clear, so no one can ever...
But the, the other option between now and then, and the next time we can get that amended, is just to simply have the town planner bring every application to us. If it's incomplete, we can deem it incomplete and send it back up the byline.
Wow.
But that's...
But I think in the subdivision stuff, it already says that...
Yep. We should try to have them report that we have different applications. The city man, okay, but the deem on, the incomplete, and then add planner's report to see if anything has been followed up by that. So, we have a checklist of going down all the way.
But it's not the board's responsibility to follow up. It's the applicant's responsibility to follow up on their application.
That way the board...
They have responsibilities if they want to get their application.
That way the board knows.
Okay.
I agree with, I agree with Marty. I think if, if he has received the application and has decided that it is, doesn't meet the quality to come forward to board, we should be informed.
And that seems to be, and the, and the problem appears to be that, from that point on, there was no communication with the applicant as to whether or not it was completed. This is, this, this is what the applicant said.
Okay, we're talking about the application.
Okay, we're back to that.
Okay.
Then it's a new application that's before you, and they are basically going to be coming in, I do have some, several things to say. That's a new application that's coming before you. It is basically a pre-application, asking what kind of information that you want. It's going to be a large greenhouse, it's for experimental purposes. It's over on Neotose land off Alimic Road, and he wants to know how much stuff he has to really put in to, to go through the site plan, because, excuse me, conditional use, because it is too large of a structure for us to handle at staff level. So...
Are they going to grow tapu?
No, it's going to grow shiitakes.
Okay.
Is this, is this conditional use in DB1 now?
No, it's not DB1.
No, it is DB1 now.
It is DB1, that's why I'm wondering.
No, I don't believe, he isn't actually in DB2. No, he's in DB1 now. I'm going to have to look at the map.
All right, and I'm just, and I'm just not sure whether or not it's...
Probably a lot.
Agriculture is, yes. Agriculture's a lot. I don't know if it's conditional or, or, either way, even if it's site plan, your site, it's a plenary site plan, it's beyond staff level review, because it's too big of a building.
How big is it?
It's, what, 1,200, 1,500?
Yeah.
The threshold is 1,000.
Yeah, right.
Just, just for your knowledge, it's, you know, Naoto.
Naoto.
He says Yoko.
Yoko.
That's what he says on the phone.
Yoko.
Okay.
Okay.
I talked to him on the phone, I just, I, I repeat what he calls it. Okay, that's what he called himself, though.
I call him a lot of different things. Noto's.
Other than, is this on for next week, or for interweeks?
Yeah, it's on for two weeks. You also have the, you also have a little confusion on seasonal cottages. They're wondering, are they supposed to bring back, come back with some, another plan and get an approval from the board?
For what?
I told him, I, I thought that basically you were giving me the responsibility to look at, make sure they had additional parking, and that was pretty much it. Was I right in that perception?
Yeah.
That's what I told him. They were, they were on the agenda, I said, you're done.
Well, there was a motion that was made, because I made it, that they come back at the beginning of each phase.
Right, right.
And the reason that motion was made is because Joe stood before, and I talked with Joe after that meeting, he stood before town and said, that's what he was going to do.
Right.
He was going to come to this board, he was going to go to the, select and go to the town at each phase, make sure everybody was informed. So, the motion was, he was done, he was done with his current plan. Any diminutive changes was left to you, but at the beginning of each phase, he had to come in, even if there wasn't nothing new to report.
And the plan for the community center was approved on the condition that it showed parks. And he doesn't have to come back.
I have a question, if we have, knowing that they have enough material and everything else, are they doing the same thing as for the road, as Parker just went through?
No.
Build it to town standards?
Yeah. I mean, because they, because the parkers had to turn out to be a certain size rock, this, that, and everything else. And that's even a private lake.
If I remember, they are.
I'm just asking somebody who's not listening.
Sorry, Marty. I'm sorry.
I ask the question, is country, seasonal cottages, they're building all their roads to the same ordeals that Parker had to go through, where his road?
Townspect.
DOT spats?
Yeah.
I'm just asking the question.
You want to see our drawdown meetings? Come on down, it's public.
I drive by maybe once a month.
We have drawdown meetings, we have three engineers in here.
I'm just asking because...
All I do is sign. I don't have to say anything.
You're going to move them out, okay?
No, it isn't.
I'll sit and wait.
Essentially, no.
Come on over.
They're, they're under greater scrutiny, and they're... Oh, no, get them on the other side.
Okay, let's walk around, sign this up, get it done.
Yeah, let's get, and... Remember, this also, Fairway Drive was approved last night?
Yep.
Those who were in attendance, that's the first town hall to take a...
This is Parker.
Yeah.
Let's just, Fairway Drive approved, but with conditions... Does it mean town... That's the condition, they have to get...
Can we get an agenda?
Just pass the power lines on.
I'm adjourned.
Say, we have to finish signing, don't we? You can do that on...
The power lines is...
I'm out of rope, that's my, my camera's about to go.
Motion to the second.
I made the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Go ahead.
So, now we're adjourned.